If I could have, uh, Madam Clerk to do the roll, please.
Please, one second.
Okay, give her one second. Uh, Councilman Winfrey, for the record, is out of town.
You're calling an order.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Ms. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Davis, I believe, is here.
Yeah, he was for the committee.
Okay, Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
Present.
Thank you.
Ms. Councilwoman Galloway, can you lead us, uh, to pledge allegiance and also do our prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. God, I thank you for new leadership, but God, I pray your word over the leadership according to your word that says, "They that rule over men must rule in the fear of God." I pray for every leader to have the wisdom of Solomon, where Solomon said, "Give therefore thy servant an understanding heart, that we may discern between good and evil, for who is able to judge this thy so great a people." God, your word says that a city divided, a house divided, a community divided cannot stand, and so I pray for your supreme power to bring forth a unity like this city has never seen before. God, I pray for Howard Croft and his endeavors. God, I thank you that he was a man after your own heart, is a man after your own heart, and God, although my heart is saddened because I believe that this really, um, was a man that we needed for such a time as this, God, I thank you that you are not surprised, and God, I thank you that you are working all things for the s- good of this city because you love us and we are called according to your purpose. In Jesus' name we pray, and thank you, Lord, amen.
Amen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I would like to see if we can do a moment of silence for the victims who, um, lost their lives in Paris.
Yes, yes.
And he says Nigeria, too.
Nigeria, okay, yes. Thank you. Before we get started and go to our special order, let me read a statement on, I know that we will have a, a, a beautiful meeting tonight, but let me read this before we can further on. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-12, disorderly conduct, disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest and for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of this meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting this meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. We do have a special order, and I myself will do this. To my colleagues and to the waiting audience, to the public, I would like to present a special tribute tonight for Councilman Scott Kincaid, who has served this city council for thirty years, who is the longest member of the council on record, and Congressman Kildee will be in the Congress, will do a congressional record statement that would be in archives forever. It says, "Special tribute to be resolved on behalf of the citizens of the city of Flint and the Flint City Council is so grateful, grateful to pay distinguished to the Honorable Scott Kincaid, Ninth Ward, Flint City Council," and it says, "Over thirty, for thirty years of service." Scott, for thirty years you have served this city and the Ninth Ward, and it shows that they respect you, they love you, for thirty years they have told you to lead the ship in the Ninth Ward, and you have touched so many lives in this city and on this city council, city council seat. You've met from the White House to all the way back here at home, you're the same. You, you have proven your leadership skills in this city throughout the thirty years, and we're not saying you're going anywhere, we're saying, "Thank you for the thirty years that you've already rendered." Now, I'm not at church, so I can't say anymore, I would hit a little note for you, but I won't do it. But Scott, I'm gonna bring you this on behalf of the whole city council, we want you to see it. And I think it's honor for you to have thirty years with us, we thank you.
Mr. President, just a couple of words, and, uh, I can't tell you how much I greatly appreciate, um, this, this recognition. Thirty years ago, when I decided to run for city council, I was an employee at Fisher Body Number One, and they had made an announcement that that plant was gonna close, and I vowed, um, to the plant manager and the personnel director while I was at that facility, that I was gonna do everything in my power to keep that plant alive and recognized in this community for as long as I lived. And so I decided to run for city council in nineteen eighty-five, and I was elected, and General Motors had made the announcement that that plant was gonna close actually in nineteen eighty-three, but we made some negotiations at the plant, and we kept it alive for a number of years until December of nineteen eighty-seven, and at that time, I was working with the personnel director, Levert Jones, who lived over in Evergreen Valley area, Evergreen Estates, actually, and him and his wife, and we worked very close together, and I met with General Motors on a number of occasions, and, um, got in touch with a developer called Miller Vigliotti, and we sat down and we worked together, and we came up with a plan for Fisher Body Number One that preserved the administration building because I thought that was a historic symbol for this community because that's actually where the sit-down strike originated, and I wanted to make sure that that building was preserved along with some demolition that they wanted to take place at that facility in order to make it more conducive for what they wanted to, and during this time, we were continuing to meet with General Motors, and I don't know if people remember this, but it was the Buick Olds Cadillac Division, and we got in agreement, um, to have them take the north end of the building, and that left the south end of the building vacant. And I had a great relationship with Mr. Tannehill, and had a number of, um, meetings with him over on Dorit Highway, and while they were going through the process of changing from GMAC Division to Delphi, they agreed to make their world headquarters at the south end, which gave the Fisher Body Plant, um, the life that it has or had for about fifteen years. And since then, as everyone knows in this community, that INN now takes up the south end, and Diplomat Pharmacy, that is now providing over a thousand jobs at that site, um, continues to grow and expand, and I can sit here tonight and say that there isn't a General Motors facility in Flint that hasn't been tore down, including their administration buildings, except for Fisher Body Number One on South Saginaw Street in the Ninth Ward. So, that was my major goal for running, I've had a lot of accomplishments over the years that I've been on the city council, I've had a great, great working relationship with my colleagues, even though we've had our differences on, on occasions, um, I've had a great working relationship with the county, Board of Commissioners, um, I sat on a study years ago looking at a pipeline for freshwater from Lake Huron to Genesee County in Flint, and that never happened, but now it has, so I think that that is going to be a vast improvement for economic development in our community, and I think there's a lot of opportunity getting raw freshwater to our community instead of buying treated water, um, from DWSD or now Great Lakes Water Authority, so I, I just wanna say, I never imagined being here thirty years, that was never my goal, but I've enjoyed every day that I've been here, I've enjoyed the challenges, I've learned so much about government and the budget, and I know where the cookie jars and the crumbs are, and I know how to get to 'em. And, uh, I just wanna thank you, Mr. President, Vicki, Vice President, and my colleagues for presenting this to me tonight, thank you very much.
You're welcome. That brings us to, uh, previous ministers, their motion.
Mr. Chair, President, I'd move that we accept 150938939 with corrections.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported, in discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
Um, when I look at 150939, and I look at the contents of it, resolution number 150929, I'm a little confused, so maybe somebody can straighten me out, and then that'll tell me whether I have any corrections. It talked about, um, a substitute motion.
Which page, Councilman?
That would be on page three. But, um, you know, it was a motion made to postpone, and then the substitute motion was to, um, pass, and that substitute motion failed, but I don't recall a vote on the original motion to postpone. And then later on, on page five, is the motion for reconsideration. So, the record will reflect whether or not the original motion to postpone was voted on, my memory says it might not have been.
It was.
It was? Okay, and so, um, that's what I was thinking, I was thinking that the original motion wasn't voted on, but the substitute motion took precedence and was the only one that was voted on. I knew that the substitute motion had, um, failed three to four, and I didn't think we circled back on the original motion to postpone, we then moved to a motion to reconsider, but, you know, I'm in favor of supporting the motion with corrections, and at some time we can look at that, but, you know, I've got confidence in the record versus my memory, but that's the part that I wanted to bring back up for a second look, and, um, I've had eye contact with both the clerk and the Vina's secretary, so I'm sure we'll probably look at that and see, but that's my only concern at this point.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Um, I was looking to the, um, on 150909 and 150910, it says that it passed, but it has A's ten, it looks like it's duplicated you on those, it has you as councilperson Nelson and also President Nelson. On both of them?
What page?
What page?
Three and, I mean, one and two.
One and three?
One and two. Page one of the summary meeting, meeting minutes, page one, and then the back on page two.
On 938.
Huh?
Right.
Oh, because it said ten.
That's a correction, that's, yeah, that was, I was informed. Davina said she was, is in the system, but Davina said she will correct that.
Okay.
Was that 150909, where it said ten A?
Mm-hmm. Is there anything else? Madam Clerk, roll.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
There's no public hearings, and, okay, now it brings us back to the public speakers, a public comic, and this is only what's on the agenda, the agenda items, this is the part that's only, you can talk about what's on the agenda, okay? Madam Clerk, first.
Um, our first speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson, Mr. Woodson.
Good evening. Good evening, hello, everyone, um, I was, uh, wanting to speak about, uh, Land, uh, Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman. We need to find out if we can somehow fix that contract and get rid of them, because they are the ones that suppose that did the chemical cocktail and implemented the phosphates, and knowing that we didn't have a pump to even push the phosphate, phosphates in the water, why would we get an engineering firm to look over another engineering firm? If that one engineering firm has to look over another one, we need to get the one looking over that one. Land, uh, I researched, has multiple, not just one or two lawsuits, but multiple lawsuits for neglect, negligence, misrepresentation, uh, one of them was just in two thousand fourteen. Also, we need to start looking at the budget as far as, not the budget, but if it's a hiring freeze, how is it that they are hiring people down, down at the water plant ju- for sixty thousand dollars, didn't put the bid up or job opening up, but, uh, the person is getting paid sixty thousand dollars a year? I don't, I don't understand that. Then Mike Brown, uh, emptied out the IT department when he first came in and brought in his son-in-law, and why won't we look and see as far as with that Google Onyx, why don't we see if, uh, we can bring some jobs in and bring IT department back for the city of Flint and have people in the city of Flint doing that job? Because I think his name is Tony Bianco that owns that company down in Florida, so, uh, we can, we can do that also, uh, because it, I mean, it really doesn't make any sense, uh, having land here, and land doesn't really know what they're doing, then we're gonna have a serious problem also, I hear everybody's talking about having, uh, the, the, the water, raw water coming in. Well, here's the problem with that, we only get eighteen million gallons, uh, a day, and they only put a small pipe in, so if some companies come in that needs raw water, the pipe isn't big enough, so KWA already know this issue, and everybody else already know this issue, so then we're gonna have to retreat right back to Flint River water again and start doing blended water because we only allow eighteen million gallons a day, so by them knowing this problem, they wouldn't even fix the problem before they even put the pipes in. I think if, if I'm not mistaken, is it thirty-six that they're putting in, and it's supposed to be like a fifty-six or forty-six?
I think there's, I think it's a forty-two or forty-six.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be bigger than what it is, so, uh, yes, I did research that, so, uh, if, if people are buying, companies coming in, buying this water, which, uh, you got GM that's off right now, offline right now, they come back in, I think they use a million, so every time it goes down, Flint residents is losing out, so we're gonna have a bigger problem than what we had before.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell.
Good evening. Yeah, hello. Hello, Mr. President, about this public order number three, and about this, a moment of silence about Nigeria and France. Ever since our new mayor got hired in, seemed like I've become victim of circumstances in the city of Flint. My home has been broken into, but the landlord, he's a, he's a pastor, concerned pastor, and he seemed like it-
Mr. Mitchell, it has to be a item that's on the agenda right now, that can, what you're saying now, you can say it, but at the second portion, it must be agenda item now.
It's agenda, the item right now is, when the mayor is not present, and one of the council members is not present, but the financial, uh-
Mr. Mitchell, that's not agenda item, that is not a agenda item, so what you're saying, you can say it, but you just can't say it at this section, you have to say it at the second public speaking portion.
Is that yellow form?
No, that's the white form.
Like I was saying, sir, about this, uh, these houses in Flint, the houses property are, these budget, these houses, talking about the Sims budget money, protection on the, on the Sims, you got, ain't got enough money to, to budget protection for the peoples in Sims, Sem neighborhood. I'm trying to say, I was, one of the, the person lived in Sims project, and, and this Davidson fellow, and the councilman right here, and I'm trying to see, he always seemed like he can't, uh, control his own Sem department and stuff and stuff, I mentioned and stuff, and every time somebody get up and talk, you always interrupt before I even get through the point, and all that junk, for, you make the councilman look real bad, real bad, and, and all, and all these peoples round here, and- How many more minutes I got, lady? Before I can take my time and talk to this Mr. President right here. I'll tell you what, Mr. President, you acting like the other president that you got rid of, Josh, you always interrupting my, my, my concern about this city and all that junk, and I'll give you my rest of my time to the next, next person.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Our last speaker for this segment is Mr. Quincy Murphy, Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Quincy Murphy, and, um, my, um, comment tonight is on Resolution 150932, the budget amendment uncommitted, Community Development Block Grant for Protection of Smith Village. The reason why I have a concern with this, because I've been following Smith Village before, when, Smith Village was supposed to be developed when University Park was here up under the leadership of Mayor, former Mayor Woodrow Stanley. That, um, project was supposed to be completed with University Park, but it wasn't. We also got NSP two dollars, if I'm not mistaken, and some of those dollars were, uh, moved to, in between the first ward and the third ward with Brian Noden area, I think from Carpenter Road to Pearson Road, from Saginaw or Martin Luther King back to do, um, NSP one houses, I mean, two houses that was in foreclosure, so they removed, redirected those funds to Smith Village, so we were supposed to complete Smith Village, but with the emergency manager that came in and they, um, booted out the contractor and put some more people in, then a whole bunch of other turmoil stuff happened, then, um, the houses didn't get completed, there was a stop, they moved, stopped, now, um, people done vandalized the house, y'all done moved Community Development Block Grant dollars to those, uh, particular houses, now y'all moving close to two hundred thousand dollars to that particular area, and I have a problem with that. I just visited, um, my brother's keeper's Friday, and I, when I went there, I stayed there for a long time, um, I've been there for a couple of days, just being there, and I had the experience to sit down with the homeless men, to talk to them, and, um, have some dialogue, I even ate with them. Those dollars could be used towards capital improvement on getting them some new beds and some new mattresses and some new showers and some improvements that will, um, stand longevity versus four months, ninety thousand dollars, that's my one issue. My other one is, um, complete tolling, Section 150936, since two thousand ten, you guys have been giving them a contract, now they about to get additional four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars without putting it out for bid, so for seven years, complete tolling is going to have basically, um, have a contract for seven years without putting that out for bid, and I thought anything over twenty-five thousand had to be put out for bid. I think you guys should, um, postpone this contract for, um, complete tolling, put it out for bid, whether they get it or not, I just don't think they should be, have that, um, glory to be able to, um, get a contract without putting it out for bid for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That gives other, um, tolling companies a cha- they, they don't even get to compete, and I'm not against complete, but I'm against how you guys are doing it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Madam Clerk, any petitions or unofficial communications?
No, Mr. President.
All right, any appointments?
No appointments.
Any license?
No.
And then resolutions, brings us to the master resolution?
Mr. President, make a motion on the master resolution?
It's been, a motion's been made, is there support?
Without support.
Has been supported, been moved and supported, in discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I would like to separate 150929.
Okay, it's been a separation?
I would also like to separate 150936.
Okay.
And I would like to separate 150932, I guess that'd leave everything separate.
Yeah, was this only one?
It's only one left.
It's only one left?
One left.
It can be separated in their master resolution by itself, I guess.
Okay, any more separations? Voting on the one of the master resolution. Madam Clerk?
Um, Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Is this 150937?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no, on the master resolution, which is one resolution, 150937.
That, that takes us to the first separation, 15029929.
150929.
Yes.
This is the Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman, um, implementation of the water plant operations. This is gonna be a tough one for me as it relates to, um, you know, land. I don't really like the reputation of this particular company based upon what we've just experienced under their watch somewhat, as it- based upon what we've just experienced under their watch somewhat as it relates to water, particularly in light of the, um, engineering report that came to my attention dating back to two thousand and eleven. The damage as it relates to biofilm, the infrastructure, the corrosive nature of the water. Um, I'm just not comfortable with this particular company. I do understand that this is a change order. I do understand that it's a contract, and, um, I do understand the administration making the communications that at this point, it could hold up the Kerrigandee Pipeline connecting to the, um, treatment plant on Doord Highway. Um, let me ask this question, Mr. President, if I may, through you to Mr. Glasgow. Mr. Glasgow, can you address that pipe that Mr. Woodson referred to as it relates to the size?
Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, Councilman Mays, I can address that. Original designs for the KWA did call for a larger diameter pipe coming into the plant. After further, I guess, design and look into it, um, and what the city believed they would need as a daily usage for water, the pipe was downsized to a thirty-six inch at that time. Um, I can't tell you who exactly made that decision. That was born out of the KWA, so it was probably on their watch and their call.
But before you leave the microphone, um, do you believe that we could take in, if need be, twenty-four million gallons plus that eighteen that we already might take? And, um, I know that I've heard that if we need additional gallons from the KWA, we probably can get it. But, um, that pipe would allow the capacity to take in more than eighteen, from what you know?
From what I know, we, that pipe can deliver a certain amount, extra over that eighteen million gallons, um, to be exact, I don't know how much.
I think that would, that would do it, Mr. President, as it relates to those particular line of questioning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask exactly who that is?
Mr. Glasgow is the person who took Duffy's place, Mr. Doarty. When Mr. Doarty resigned, am not mistaken, he took his place, and he would better describe himself better than I, let him introduce himself to you.
Can I just ask him a quick question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Galloway.
You said that you don't know what the capacity is, that that water, that we would be able to receive. And the only reason why I was asking, um, who you are, it, it, I don't know, does it seem like that should be something that you should be familiar with? Considering the responsibility that you have? Or do you not monitor the intake of water and making sure that we have the proper amount of water to service the residents?
Well, Councilman, or Councilwoman Galloway, uh, I should have some idea what the maximum capacity is from that pipe. All I know is that the city bought into eighteen million gallons a day. That's what we bought into the KWA, that is our contract with them. So there's still some questions that I would have to do research to answer, is how we go about getting extra if we need more. I've heard from different discussions that the pipe, you know, depending on how much they want to pump, they could push a few more MGD, million gallons per day through that pipe. But until that, I guess arises, or we look at the contract a little more closely.
I wasn't trying to be disrespectful.
Oh, no disrespect taken.
The, when you answered, it kind of seemed like there might have been a hint that I might have had an undertone, and it wasn't that. Um, I, I just realized that this is going to be, that kind of information, to me, appears to be very crucial to what capacity that line can have, and I, and I didn't know that you were replacing, I didn't, I, so I don't, I don't mean any disrespect. We're only meeting for the first time, so good to meet you, glad to have you, didn't mean any disrespect. Um, I, I just, because of where we are as a community, um, I would like to know what the capacity is. I would like to know who, how the decision was made to s- s- make the pipe smaller. As you said, based on the capacity, there was a decision, but you also said you don't know whose decision that was. And so I don't know when that can be, you can get it to Jody, anybody, um, I just was wondering. So I don't have any more questions, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galloway. Any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Mays?
Uh, Mr. Glasgow, in light of, um, Howard Cross, Mr. Cross resignation on a daily basis, who do you report to now?
I report directly to the city administrator.
Right. Jody?
Thank you for letting me address the council, I just did want to respond to a portion of that, that conversation. Um, obviously, as everyone is aware, the director of the Department of Public Works has just recently resigned, um, prior to today. Mike Glasgow was reporting to the director of Public Works, so this is an interim reporting structure. But I am inspired by your look towards the future and the city's capacity for future growth. I would just like to remind everyone that, um, while Mike Glasgow is very competent and capable in his position, the reason why we do have this contract before you for land is that they are an engineering firm, and they're assisting the city with the engineering plans for completing the project for the KWA to bring water to the city. Our current capacity is well below eighteen million, I believe we're on average about twelve or thirteen. That's down from fifteen after our leak detection, so those are all factors to keep in mind, that we're obviously now currently well below eighteen, and should we have anticipation that we're reaching or about to broach the eighteen, we would definitely have to work with KWA on renegotiating the terms of our contract and the purchase of that additional water.
Mr. President, can I do a quick follow-up question to that?
Go ahead, Councilman Mays.
Who took Mr. Glasgow's spot, once he took Duffy's spot? Do we know, Mr. Glasgow?
What is that question? I didn't hear the question.
He had a spot in the water department already, and then when Duffy re- um, left, he took Duffy's spot. And I'm wondering, do he know he took his spot? Because you got a certain classification, correct?
Correct.
And you had that same classification prior, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do you know if anybody replaced you?
Nobody has replaced me yet, but we have just posted a job as of Friday to look for somebody with the same licensing as myself to be at the water plant.
And what is that licensing?
That is an F-one complete treatment drinking water license.
And that's a required license?
Correct, yes.
And so right now, you are the person who holds it, and we've posted for another person with that qualification?
Correct, Councilman.
And is the intent for you, do you know is the intent for you to stay in the spot you have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Co- uh, Councilman Freeman?
Uh, not to muddy the waters, I suppose, but I think a lot of us are getting hung up on this eighteen million gallons versus what the capacity of the actual pipe is. Um, my understanding, um, with discussions on the KWA side, is that that pipe can provide almost double that capacity. Um, comfortably thirty million gallons a day. The eighteen million gallons is what we signed a contract for with, um, KWA, and that contract allows us to buy more capacity should the city find itself in a, um, ongoing position of needing that capacity, so it's not like the, the pipe is designed for eighteen million gallons a day, that's not the case at all.
Councilwoman Galloway? She's okay? All right, any more questions and discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is on 150929.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two no.
Okay. The next separation, 150936.
Nine three, nine.
Nine three.
Nine three two.
Nine three two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, this would be the, um, Smith Village security. Mr. President, could I ask Mr. Larkin a quick question?
Go ahead, Mr. Larkin.
Mr. Larkin, in between meetings, you communicated that that fifteen percent of block grant money that Mike could hire police was about five hundred thousand.
Co- correct, I, I got response back to your question from the committee of the whole, and, um, fifteen percent of our total CDBG dollars can be allocated towards public service activities currently, and, uh, this fiscal year, fifteen percent would equate to roughly five hundred thousand.
And this monies that's before us now do not include, that's not part of that fifteen percent, or is it, do you know?
Smith Village is not a part of the fifteen percent, uh, I can, so the activities that I mentioned.
The, the fifteen percent was public service, and this is home.
Correct. And the activities I mentioned, just for the audience, the activities that are currently, um, that compose the, the full public service activities are the PAL Youth Activities League with the Flint Police, youth initiatives with the Boys and Girls Club, youth recreation with the United Way, victim advocacy with the YWCA, housing discrimination testing with Legal Services of Eastern Michigan, Flint and Genesee Literacy Coalition with the CSMI Community College, My Brother's Keeper President's Initiative with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Southside Trace Neighborhood Safety with the Flint Police, and Fair Housing and Landlord Tenant Relations with G Card. They currently allocate ninety-nine point nine percent of that, those available funds.
Of that five hundred thousand?
Approximately, yes.
Um, based upon the discussion that we've had already on this, um, in the special meeting and in committee meeting, I have no further communications at this time, Mr. President.
Anything else, Mr. Larkin, any other council persons? Okay, thank you, Mr. Larkin. Any more discussion? Anything else, Mr. Mays?
Um, I would just say this, Mr. President. We gotta do a better job. This Smith Village thing done went on and on. It's been a problem child project for the city of Flint way before I got on this council, and that from fourteen down to three, let's see what we could get done. I would like to make sure that Mr. Larkin brings us an update in the month of both this, well, December, well, in these months, December, January, and February in the planning committee meeting. Mr. Lo- Larkin, if I may, request it, Mr. President, I want a monthly update all the way through this contract on how many of those fourteen that we closed on. I want to keep a tab on that each month until this contract is over. And any incidents of vandalism, I want to hear about them. If I can inquire for that.
Okay. Finished, Mr. Mays?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm hoping and praying that this is the last round of Smith Village, because I have seen people fight for Smith Village since two thousand and five. Some of them, um, wanted homes there, but they have went on to glory. So I'm praying that this time next year, Smith Village is done, all of the houses are occupied, and we can put this behind us, because this is going into twenty years where this should have been done a long, long time ago. It has been stopped, I have seen it stop, start, holes dug, just stop, start, stop, start. So I'm hoping that this is it for Smith Village, and that all those that have applied, I pray that their mortgages go through and that they can occupy these homes, they are beautiful homes. Um, I even tried to talk my son into buying one, but he wouldn't. But I just hope we can do something, uh, Mr. Larkin, to get everybody that needs to be in Smith Village there, and let's move on, and like they did in university, and just move on, it's time.
Any other discussion?
One last thing, Mr. President. I would like to make a referral to the police department to bring forward and give us some status in the Public Safety Committee meeting on the air conditioners and the suspect who might have been arrested for vandalizing those particular houses. I've got some information that say it was some air conditioners recovered and a suspect, and once that happens, some things quieten down. I want to see what the status is, is them air conditioning still in our evidence room? And/or is the suspect the real person who we moving forward with? So I'd like to make a referral for that information to be brought to the Public Safety.
I mean, you have that, or, okay, we have it, so noted. Any other discussion? I would like to say that I met with Mr. Larkin, and this is the last go-around for this. When it comes up in March, hopefully, that it's all taken care of, that we have those eleven homes occupied, because it has to come to a point where we have to say, that's enough. Um, I understand this is in Councilperson Davis' ward, and I know he's expressed his concern, and I support him on his concern. But we have to do, to do all we can to make sure those people, Councilman Mays knows somebody that's been waiting a whole year. There's other those people that's been waiting a year. So we, we've got to get these people to do all we can to get those, get them into these homes, because the, the dollar amount keeps growing and growing and growing. So hopefully, I'm like Councilman Mays and, and Councilwoman Poplar, hopefully, this, this is, this is it for Smith Village, that we get those homes, um, filled, and the vandalism will cease once all of those persons are in their homes. So let's, let's, let's hope that we can get that information that we have asked for and get the studies done on it. Thank you, Mr. Larkin, you're doing a fine job. Any other discussions?
One last thing, I said that last time.
Yeah, you did say that, Mr. Mays.
One last, last thing. I would try to, um, ask Ms. Lundquist and the administration if this vote passed tonight. Um, communicate with that, um, security firm, because if they're not securing it and we pass this, even though we know we got a delay with the Transition Advisory Board, and if there was some outstanding invoices, the point is, we ain't trying to really, from what I hear, allocate no money, but we really want this thing secured. So if this thing passed tonight, I would hope that you immediately, in light of the delay with the Transition Advisory Board, that you enter into some communications with that, um, security firm, and maybe we can make sure the intent of what we're doing tonight happens.
Right.
Um, so I would make that request, and then I would say, do all things necessary to disburse those funds when it's mechanically okay.
Thank you.
Uh, within the con- I would like to assure the council, within the confines of the purchasing ordinance,
recognizing this need to continue security services to Smith Village, we did issue an emergency purchase order so that those, uh, services could continue to be provided while we await council and R-TAB approval.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I ask a question, and maybe it's a referral to the legal department? How does an emergency purchase order work, and why does that not need, um, R-TAB approval? Is it the dollar amount, I, but this is an, would be an aggregate higher than what the purchasing, um, ordinance requires, so. I don't need, obviously, I'm probably not gonna get an answer tonight, but, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All discussions have, any other thing? All right, we need a motion, there's not a motion on the floor. All right, we need a motion, there's not a motion on the floor yet, so.
I think it's a separation, and so.
Oh, it's a separation? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Oh, yes. I thought this was the motion to separate, okay. Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No. No.
Okay. Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no on one five zero nine three two.
The next separation is one five zero nine three six.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, this is the toing. I'm gonna make a substitute motion to amend this resolution for, um, by a hundred and fifty thousand for FY two thousand seventeen. That would change the three hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, and the purpose that I'm doing that is based upon the information I heard Mr. Jones give as it relates to, um, when he could put this out for bid. So I move to amend this resolution by a hundred and fifty thousand, um, for FY two seventeen to three hundred thousand.
Has been a motion made, is there any support? Any support? The motion says, lack of support. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, before you call for the vote, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I won't be supporting this.
All right.
This is a contract that has been going on under emergency manager law, if I'm not mistaken, it seemed to talk about from two thousand twelve, or even two thousand ten, that was before emergency manager law. I think emergency managers came in somewhere around two thousand and eleven, but two thousand ten until now. And there's no good reason that I could hear, um, that we couldn't put this back out for bid, according to what the administration said a year. I'm disappointed that we couldn't get, I couldn't get support to amend the, um, FY two thousand seventeen by a hundred and fifty thousand. That disappoints me, because if I'm gonna be fiscal, fiscally responsible, then I'm gonna look at every twenty thousand, every hundred thousand, and every hundred and fifty thousand. And it's, it's high time that we put that out for a bid. We don't know what better chance we could get, um, in the marketplace with Complete or any other, um, toing company. So it disappoints me, and since I'm disappointed on the amendment, and since I clearly understand the mechanics of what's being asked in this change order and Complete, I will not be a part of this ongoing process of not putting stuff out for a bid. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Uh, no.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two no.
That's the conclusion of the resolutions. Liquor license, Madam Clerk?
We have none.
Ordinance for first reading?
None.
Second reading?
None.
Okay, this brings us to our public speakers.
And Mr. President?
Mr. Councilman Mays?
Before we go to that, ordinance is for first and second reading, through you to the, um, city attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Bade, we had a presentation during the special meeting as it relates to ordinances, um, and we were raided. And I know that the process of those ordinances and that overhaul is moving through plan and commission process, so forth and so on. But I'm very concerned about the ordinance process, and I've spoke on it as it relates to a dissolved legislative committee. And so I'm asking you, in financing administration, can you give us a detailed update on any ordinances in the pipeline, and how far are they away from being brought to us? I do understand that we can initiate ordinances through various committees, but since we don't have a legislative committee, I think it's high time for me to get a feel of what's in the pipeline. Who in your office handles that?
It depends on the ordinance. I mean, it really depends. Uh, often multiple attorneys handle ordinance changes, whether they come from a request from council, or, uh, the mayor, or city administrator.
Well, let me do it this way, I won't say that it'd have to be in the next financing administrative, um, meeting, but I do want an inventory of what's on the table, what's moving through the pipeline, maybe within the next sixty to ninety days or sooner, um, because I'm really kinda also asking Mr. President and Mr. City Attorney that, um, you know, I'm just in favor of a legislative body having a legislative committee, and so that's really what I'm getting at, but if we don't get to that, then I'm gonna be a, um, stickler, because I'm gonna do my legislative, um, duty to, um, know everything moving through the pipeline.
Sure, I'm happy to, happy to do that, and, uh, any ordinances that, so you know, that I'm working on, I would plan to bring them to finance administration anyways, uh, so, but I'm happy to respond to that referral.
What you think about a legislative committee?
I think the same can be accomplished at financing administration, but I do think this body ought to receive proposed ordinances with sufficient time to review them and weigh in on them, that's the whole point. And so, uh, whatever you call it, the city council ought to have those proposed ordinances in front of it.
Mr. President, what you think about a legislative committee?
Me and you would talk privately, Councilman.
I don't talk too much private, I'm a public type of guy. I'm gonna say this, uh, you know what I think about it. And I'm telling you, I don't believe in emergency managers getting rid of it, I know the history of it, I know what we done been through, two presidents since I've been here, I'm not saying what they believe or think, I'm just telling you what this first ward councilman thinks. So I appreciate you pausing during the portion of the minutes that dealt with first and second reading the ordinances, so I thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Mays.
Madam Clerk, first speaker?
Our first speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson, Mr. Woodson?
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, again, a long time ago, I came before you about KWA and Flint River Water, and I talked about and discussed quality of the water, and look where we are now. Again, I'm gonna talk about KWA. What you hear is not right, what Ms. Lundquist said isn't right. The water will not be able, that pipe will not be able to push enough water. Now, to you, Mr. Bade, uh, come November the twenty fifth, the mayor that's supposed to sit on KWA, uh, if Jeff Wright changes or amend the bylaws, can he do anything about our ordinance? Because under ordinance number thirty-eight fifty-eight, it states that, uh, the Kerr Gandhi Water Authority Board was created pursuant to contract between the Kerr Gandhi Water Authority, the City of Flint, and the Genesee County Drain Commission, and that, uh, and, and is comprised of fifteen members. B, the City of Flint is represented on the board by four members, of which one representative is the mayor, and three representatives are appointed by the mayor. Then it says, it's affirmed that the KWA oath of office prior to service, uh, abide by these articles of incorporation of the Kerr Gandhi Water Authority, be residents of the City of Flint, the appointed representatives shall be, shall be appointed by the mayor's discretion and serve at the mayor's pleasures, and that's under ordinance thirty-eight fifty-eight. Now, that was signed by Donnell Early, January two thousand fifteen, I think it was two thousand fifteen, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, will they be able to go against that order? And will the mayor, uh, it was signed the eighth day of January two thousand fifteen by Donnell Early and yourself? Will KWA be able to keep Mayor Weaver from residing on that board? And if she wants to remove Sheldon Neely and Mr. Freeman from that board, will she be able to do so? That is one of the questions that I have. And also, you know, for future references, which I'll please, that, that, that toing company, it should be a bidding process, because you could have got better for less. I mean, we just throwing money out there, and we supposed to be looking and, looking to save, and nothing against you, Mr. Larkin, but you are a branch of Mr. Snyder. You know, it, it, it's not Mayor Weaver's appointee, he works for Mr. Snyder. I don't know him personally, but I know what Mr. Snyder is about. And Mr. Snyder doesn't have the Flint residents' best interest at heart. And then the, uh, president of the Flint Union, if I'm not mistaken, on video, said that the City of Flint, when they took their toing away from the City of Flint, the City of Flint lost a lot of money with the impound and with the toing. I mean, that's what he said, I didn't say this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. R. L. Mitchell.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening. First of all, Mr. President, I was born in Georgia, not Georgia over there in Russia, but I came to Flint when I was four years old, ended up on St. John Street, and went to Fairview School, where the mayor's mother was attending. And she taught me about black history. It's against the law to teach a black boy to read, and had a problem with the Dickens James book, taught my secondhand book, I remember that as clear as today, but I'm saying that to say this, Mr. Larson, talking about, uh, Smith Bridge, uh, Smith Village, where that Davison lives, is that, and talking about problem child cases. Every house I live in in Flint, they treat me like I'm a problem child, but this time they know messed up. I'm now, I just found out what the, my caseworker talking about. Thanks to Ms. Henderson, she put an emergency order out there, I might be your neighbor pretty soon, sir. And Smith Village, what's one of them brand new houses? You wait along till everybody get killed, who ordered the houses, they're digging holes and stuff. I remember them high powered guns over there, something you use in the war, the Middle East. And oh, I can hear the gunshots, you're putting, murder down there on Avenue B. All that junk, like you don't know who the murders is, you get all them criminals a job, and, uh, don't say nothing about that, and, and all that junk, you doing something nobody never did before. Get criminals a job, make them feel, fuck, I'm saying this to you, Mr. Larson, you were supposed to be on commission, and you came over here, now you, she gave you a finance, she gave you a mer, emergency order to take care of peoples like me for, they always accusing me of tearing up, when I move to the neighborhood, talking about tearing up the houses, they tear up the houses when I, you're drunk and heathens. I live three miles from that water department on Pearson Road, I can walk down, I look, get close, they treat me like I'm a commoner, might go over the fence and do something, if I even look that way. And that dude, where you at now, he walked out. He already got the doctor fired, and now he, and he still in the drunk and all that, and y'all scared to talk about, talk about, watch your mouth, disrespect, and all, and all that junk. You ain't stand up when he's, you build, ma, that shallow mission over there on the complex, supposed to been a, a supermarket for black peoples over there, and he built, now these Smith Vision, they gonna call themselves uppity, building, uh, one pack, one houses. Talking, Mays, wasn't no joke, Reverend Mays, built, built them a project in post, but he tore down the high school and junk, but people like, talking about, the governing boy right here, he up there, setting by, and what is, the mayor now, over there, they burying, burying up, hey, the mayor ain't no play, but nobody to play with, she ain't no deal with this politics, she gonna say what, don't tell what Ms. Henderson say, you got that? Now, put that on the note.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy.
Mr. President, when Mr., while Mr. Murphy is coming, I wanna hear Mr. Bade's response to what Mr. Woodson asked about the Kerr Gandhi after this is over.
Yeah, after the public, yeah, we'll get to, I wanna hear it too.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I, I'm, I come here tonight, I, um, was gonna come the last, um, city council meeting that y'all had Wednesday, but I had to leave. But I just wanna talk about some accomplishments that our organization, uh, which was the former Garfield Bunch Community Service Corporation, which is now Urban Transformation Development, and I just wanna talk about a couple of accomplishments that we did this year. Um, one was, we completed our Clean and Green Program for the, um, we've been doing that for four years. The other one, we did a home improvement in partnership with St. John Evangelistic Work Camp Group, that's, um, for the third year, and each year we do probably about, um, five or eight homes, um, home improvement, building ramps, painting, outside, the inside of people houses. Um, another accomplishment we did was, we've been maintaining Dewey Park for the last two years, so we come out our, we raised the money to, um, rent the lawn mower from Salem Housing, which is now called the Neighborhood Hood. Uh, sometimes we not, um, able to get those, the lawn mower. For example, last week, we, um, put in a car to, uh, rent the lawn mower, but we, it wasn't available, so we wasn't able to do that last cut at Dewey Park, because we didn't have access to the equipment there. Another accomplishment was the, um, Genesee County Land Bank Decorative Boarding, where we go and identify land bank owned houses and decorate them. Um, we also was awarded, we've been working on this for two years, trying to get a, uh, pavilion up in Dewey Park. We was, uh, able to, um, get some dollars up under, um, the leadership of Brian Noden, and we've been waiting, and, um, Councilman Kerry Nelson been trying to, uh, get it implemented. They signed the contract, but, um, the weather, so now we either gonna have to wait till next year, or the money may get moved somewhere else, and those are some accomplishments that we done, but my issue to you guys now is, we accomplished a lot of things, but our problem is, we don't have the necess, we don't have the capacity to continue to move forward and maintain at a optical level to where we can actually expedite doing better than what we've been doing status quo files, just doing the regular. We using a push lawn mower to, um, do the, um, vacant lots. I came here and I pleaded with city council, when y'all sold the equipment, the Parks and Recreation Equipment, to keep that equipment for groups like us. I don't have a problem with the Neighborhood Hood, but that is not the answer to, uh, small, uh, groups like me that's out there and other groups, 'cause I'm not only just talking about me, there are a lot of other groups out there that would love to be able to do more, but we don't have the capacity, because we was, um, awarded some funding through Megan Hunter before she left to get some equipment, they had me going out, um, getting bids, and then now, when you call Adam Moore, um, they don't know what happened to us, so now that they done dropped the ball, and it's going out the place, you, you calling about the pavilion, when it's gonna get started, it's go, we gonna start this day, we gonna start now, the snow, now they can't start 'cause of the snow. I think we need to talk about those issues, and my last, um, point before I sit down is, I would like for you guys to, um, talk about the snow removal, you know, it's snow out here, what is the plan for residents to, uh, get their side streets, so we won't have to be snowed in, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Mrs. Nancy Berger. Mrs. Berger?
Good evening.
Good evening. Of course, you know who I am, I'm Nancy Berger, been here to almost every meet. Got a few things to say. People of Flint, don't wait for city council, this doesn't include you. City employees, or city. City employees or city administrators or Mike Ryder or Angela Wheeler, Wheeler, sorry, to be understanding, forgiving, compassionate, grateful, friendly. Only, they only lie to your face or over the phone. They're not generous. They have a heart, we, they don't have a heart for the people of the city of Flint. Let us open our mouths and lead the way. Show them that we're not going to give up or back down. City action, councils' actions speak louder than words. We, the people of the city of Flint, can let them apologize over and over, which they won't. It's called the blame game. But their actions do not change, so their words become meaningless to all the people in the city of Flint. Help others, we all can, as a team effort, not only from, for the rewards, but for the sake of changing others' lives, like, changing others' lives. Stick together as a team. There's no I in team. Do not astray as one. Pray together, God hears us strong in groups. Then as one, but he does also hear us alone. Fake people are takers. They appear to be there to help us and take care of us if they need them. As, as if we need them. But when we really do need them, they will stand there and lie to us over and over to our, for their own benefits. Like now, all of the people in the city of Flint need their, their help. Where are they? Giving us poisonous water and we can, uh, all we can do is flush our toilets, still to this day. Now, no one here in the city of Flint will ever get tired of speaking out, crying out. We are a team. They all, all the city employees, we are getting tired of speaking onto deaf ears. Waiting, assuming, hearing lies, hurting more and more every day, getting sicker and sicker every day. Please, Mayor Weaver, I ask and beg of you, tell Rick Snyder to tell Natasha Henderson, get the hell out of our city of Flint, so that you can do what you need to do and that can be done, what needs to be done in the city of Flint.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Can we just hold off for, just one, got one more speaker and then I'll let you go, Mr. Maze, okay?
Our last speaker is Mrs. Carrie Weber, Weber, I'm sorry, Mrs. Weber.
And I'm back. Still love my city. I don't want to bore anyone like I have in the past. My husband is now blind and one eye, my dog is dying, my daughter has lead lines in every single growth plate in her body, and she's fifteen. I am, no, it's lead line, it's where it is settled in her growth plates. She's grown three inches this year since her birthday in January. She's not near done. We have no idea what her future is. No, my husband's sight isn't coming back. Having said that, God bless you all, and I challenge you, maybe Mrs. Lundquist, you could help me? Or my guesses, Eric Mays will. I came here about a month ago and told you our bills were suddenly being estimated. Six consumption, six consumption, twelve consumption? This is the first time in four and a half years our bills have been estimated. Got a new bill today, I got one a week ago Saturday. I got a new one today, actually, it came in while I was driving down here, and my daughter contacted me. See, there's six cons again. Now, bear in mind, no one in my house is touching this water. Not only that, for those that don't know, Wayne State was in. When the city tells you the TTHMs are gone? No, they're not. Our house is over a thousand. They're repeating the test, praying it may be wrong. But ever since I spoke out here, my water bills are rocketing at a frightening rate. I have never gotten a credit, there's never been a reduction. And after I heard you say that the ninth ward always pays their bills on time, this was about three months ago, we stopped. For the first time in twenty-five years, we're waiting for the shut off. You want to play games? We'll play games. I have a house of poison people. We do not shower now, and this is disgusting, more than twice a week, and everybody's limited to five minutes. Because now we know the TTHMs are so high, the worst thing we can do is be in the hot water. We flush our toilets, we do limited laundry at home, we have four people barely taking showers, no animals drink the water, we don't cook with it, we use a hundred and forty gallons of water a month at my cost, and this city sends me a bill last month for two hundred and forty dollars. Somebody needs to look into this. I have called down here, and after an hour and a half on hold, forget it. You get anyone, the first thing they say is, oh, you have a leak. Frankly, if I had a leak that big, I'd be building an ark. There is no way I've got a two hundred and forty dollar leak in my house. Not only that, last month, just for giggles, I checked the outside meter, the one they used to read that is electronic. I checked the basement meter. My so-called actual reading wasn't even close to either meter. It was off by twelve hundred. Neither number is even close. Something must be done. This is ridiculous, and if I'm gonna speak out and I'm gonna be punished for it, it will come back. My husband's forty-four, not middle age, my daughter is fifteen. This is wrong, and to start screwing around with bills is wrong. The orders were given, they've never been followed. That's, and the TTHMs? Seriously? This is ridiculous.
Thank you. Um, that ends the portion of our public speakers, comes to the point now.
Mr. President, before, before we get to that point, can we respond to the speakers?
I'm gonna give you the chance to respond in your five minutes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't appreciate that process though, miss. I would object to that process, Mr. President.
This is the way we're gonna do it, Mr. Maze.
I understand, and I object to that process, because when people come down here, Mr. President, they ain't just coming to speak and we don't respond. We can make referrals. I don't want their time to eat up into my five minutes. I, I mean, I object to that process.
Okay, well, tonight, that's where you're gonna do it.
I'm just saying.
And we're gonna start with you, Mr..
I'm gonna appeal that, because I don't appreciate that. First of all, I want to deal with what Nancy Berger said. I read in the paper that they had condemned some apartments on Ballenger, and they had all of the agencies helping them two or three people relocate. Well, Ambassador is down to three or four families, I understand. And I committed to stick with those people to get them relocated if possible. And I know for a fact that we just finished the land bank process of going through auction. And when we go through that process in the land bank, I wanted to make a referral to Mr. Larkin and bring you up to speed. What you see happening on Ballenger Road is similar to what's happening out in Ambassador. It's been going on, the agencies might can help them people relocate out of these trailer parks that's been there for ye- uh, more than one year without water. And that's Ms. Berger. She's tried to make the transition, but I met with those families for years. They've been all in court dealing with Mike Ryder and them and them trailer people. So, I believe me, I said to them, and I mean it, I'm gonna stick with them to the end. And so, we down to three or four families now. It was eleven or fourteen when I met them, trying to get them situated. I don't think it should go on too much longer. It's opportunity there. The city got to have a relationship with the land bank, for one. And I want us to put our best foot forward. So, that's one response I didn't want to eat into my five minutes, Mr. President. And I'm making that referral to you, Mr. Larkin, and I'd be willing to communicate with you on that one privately. And I'm an open business type of guy, because I told them I would. And then, as far as Ms. Weber, Archie Hayman's courtroom Wednesday at one P.M. It's a show cause hearing at one o'clock. They gonna revisit through Bell Washington and that proceeding, whether the city to comply with the reductions. And, you know, of course, we know about the one with Trishelle and others. So, I wanted to respond to that, and I'll do that in a quick way, but y'all know how to call me at any time. And, you know, what you're saying ain't falling on deaf ears. Now, Mr. President, as it relates to what I'm thinking should be the five minutes, I got a couple of calls on the snow and ice, you know, um, removal this, um, past weekend. I guess it wasn't bad from what I seen. Um, we'll see if we on guard. Howard Croft is gone. Ms. Lundquist, who do we contact now for the city now that Howard is gone? Who is the contact person on snow and ice removal right now at this current time? Do you know? I got the, um, snow and ice control plan that was in my mailbox. I'll review it when I get home, but I'm just trying to do this for the public. Who is in, um, control of that right now?
Go ahead, Ms. Lundquist.
Uh, thank you. You can contact, uh, the city of Flint Police and nine-one-one departments. They both have the street maintenance standby lists, as well as, um, our transportation and operations manager can be reached at, and I can read those numbers.
Yeah, read that.
Eight one zero, five seven seven, eight zero seven seven.
Five seven seven, eight zero seven seven.
Correct.
And who is that person?
Betty Weideman.
Betty. So, that's kind of who is handling that, and she has been handling it, I guess, but I always would call Howard. Okay, so we'll take that from there. Um, Mr. Bates, I'm gonna want to see if I can, and I didn't want this to be a part of my five minutes, Mr. President, but I wanted to hear, because I raised that issue about, um, Mayor Weaver under what I knew the bylaws of the Carrigan Gandy. I raised it in the special meeting. I think Mr. Freeman gave me a preliminary answer, but there's a certain share.
Right, can I just say this? You can save your five minutes there. When everybody gets to talking, I'm gonna have Peter to respond on that.
Okay, well, that'll be, that'll be fine. And see, by responding to the people that go to the five minutes.
We gonna give you one more minute, Mr. Maze, one more minute.
Well, you know, I just object to the way you doing business, uh, Mr. President. And so, you know, you've been chairing a fine special meeting. This meeting has been fine, but you know, I have no, um, problem tug of war for me and the people I represent. Us responding to them should have nothing to do with our five minutes. Now, if you think I'm gonna go long and that throws me off, I'm willing to let you come to me last. So, proceed, and, uh, maybe ain't nobody got nothing, maybe they do, but will you come back to me?
No, no, no.
Oh, well.
I'm, no, no.
So, how many, so I don't appreciate the one minute, see?
Well, I'm giving you one more minute, and then, Mr. Bates.
I ain't never had the really five, I was responding to the.
You had your five now.
Uh, Mr. President, let me say this. I would've taken my five minutes dealing with the governance of this city as it relates to the mayor's race and, um, Ms. Henderson, the department heads and others. And it would've had to do with this council and our request for a special meeting to deal with that governance. I'm not gonna sit on this seat and know what's going on as it relates to my request to Mr. Bates about emergency manager order three and twenty, and I'm not gonna come to a council meeting. Every council meeting I come to is gonna have something to do with the charter, us approving appointments with qualified people as it talks about qualifications in the personnel section of the charter. I wait patiently for him to show me the language, he say notwithstanding the charter. I'm also gonna know and look at in council meetings like these prior to the holiday when Ms. Henderson ain't here. I don't mind people disappearing, but I know that contract, it talks about the city administrator being in council meetings, and she gave us a foreword and she wouldn't be here. But I'm ready to discuss, and I want it put on, if I didn't put it on there in the financing administration, the very next committee meeting, I want full discussion on how these appointees, these replacements, the processes as it relates to the mayor and council as it relates to the governance of this. I'm just saying to emergency manager order number three and twenty, I read real good. It's some discretion in there. And I'm saying this is the day that I want Ms. Henderson to come forward in the next meeting and tell me how she's gonna play that working relationship.
It is so noted, all right? Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things, I will not be long. Uh, the first thing I'm going to say is I want to thank the Ruth Mott Foundation for the money that was given to the north side of Flint. And as I read MLive, um, there were a few people that, um, had very negative comments about, uh, Ruth Mott giving the north side of Flint money. They had a negative comment about the north side of Flint. But in this political arena that I've been in, I do know one thing. You can please some of the peoples some of the time, and please don't try to please all of them all of the time. Because for one thing, if you did please them, they'd have to get up off they rusty dusty and get a life. So, that's what I gotta say about that. And thanks, thanks to Ruth Mott again, we will be having a mini station that will be opening up at Harwood Plaza. Also, the last thing I would like to say is, ten years, by the grace of God, and I thank him for it, I will be having my annual Christmas party, December the nineteenth, which is on a Saturday, at the New Life Center, which is at Proctor, Forest Hill, Pasadena area, from five-thirty until seven-thirty for kids twelve and under. It's all free, we feed people, we have giveaways, and it's a Christmas time joyful for the community. You don't have to live in the second ward to come. But if you do have children twelve and under, we do need you to just bring them and have a family night out. I know there's a number of, uh, families in the city of Flint that don't even, that are not invited to Christmas parties. And I just want to make sure that they are invited to a party, because it is the festive time of the year. And, um, I'm just proud to say that I have people that make sure that somebody has a decent Christmas in the city of Flint. So, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, congratulations again to Councilman Kincaid. I know you've had ups and I know you've had downs, but that's okay. You still sticking around. So, my hat is off to you.
Councilman Freeman?
Uh, to follow up on, um, one thing with the Ruth Mott Foundation, they're having a community forum, um, I believe on December third at Burston. I serve on the Friends of Burston Board, and they're doing that at six, uh, at Burston. It'll be one of several they're having in the community. So, if you're available that night, I would love to have you up there. Um, to go back to the KWA issue, um, I did lie about how much water can be pushed through the pipe. It's not thirty million, it's about thirty-five million gallons a day. Um, and this, in terms of... And in terms of amending the bylaws, Jeff Wright doesn't have the power to unilaterally amend bylaws. That's something that if the bylaws are going to be amended each incorporating community. So Flint, LaPierre, Genesee County, LaPierre County, and Sanlack County would all have to agree, is my understanding, and maybe Mister Bate can clarify that better, but is my understanding, would have to agree to the change in those bylaws. Karen Weaver, the mayor, Mayor Weaver does take Dane Walling's place because as a incorporating community, she automatically gets that seat along with three other people. The difference is, is that in the bylaws, it says that you take the seat and position of the person that you're replacing, should a drink commissioner or mayor replace. But in August, we were supposed, August or September, we were supposed to have a special meeting or quarterly meeting to elect new officers. And that has been pushed back because there wasn't a quorum in that August or September meeting to this meeting. So she may not be president, or she may be president of the chairman of that board, depending on what, number one, the incorporating board as the nominating committee decides for the full authority. So there's two boards there. There's two boards there. So the city ordinance doesn't dictate your position on the incorporating board or the authority of the KWA. So that's just my brief, elementary, simpleton understanding of what the KWA is supposed to be. And maybe Mister Bate can tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about, but I think I do. Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, I just wanna say I thank everyone for coming out and spending your quality time, learning, and also exchanging information in regards to local government that you pay your tax dollars in order to move the city forward. And I just wanna say, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Galloway?
Thank you. I wanted to share that there is a Thanksgiving dinner that'll be happening at the International Academy on Thanksgiving from eleven to one. So if you need any, know any families that don't have a place to spend Thanksgiving, MTA does have some pickup spots. We got a flyer. I didn't bring it out here. And I do wanna thank everyone. I hope that as a community, we can put all of our differences aside and really help to bridge any differences that we have so that we can move productively forward. And I look forward to Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galloway. Councilwoman Van Buuren?
Yes, I wanna expand a little bit more on that Thanksgiving dinner at the International Academy. I volunteer almost every year that they've done it and help provide transportation for those that would like transportation. If you are family with no vehicle available and you have children, we can arrange to pick you up, bring you to the dinner, and also take you back home. Part of what will happen is you will get a very beautiful Thanksgiving dinner. You don't have to be a part of that school community. You can be from any part of Genesee County. And like I said, if you call, we will provide your transportation. In addition, there are a few buses available in certain locations that will also bring you. You will not only have fresh cooked turkey that's made the night before in the school, real turkey meat. People also donate homemade pies. You'll have all types of refreshments, stuffing. I especially look forward to the cornbread stuffing. And try it. Me and my mother would look forward to attending, and that was our meal. If you would like to volunteer, we also take volunteers. It's also free clothing for any of those that are interested. There's free food boxes that is also available, and also free hygiene products for those who are interested. And I think they're also giving free haircuts. So there is a flyer I had placed downstairs in the lobby if you would like that information. And that young lady back there just held one up. Share it with other people. We usually have hundreds of people. We always have enough food. And if you need a ride, call the school. There is a number listed, six zero zero five two six one. Leave a message. He will return the call, and we will make sure we get the information on where you live and how many people will be expected. So please, join us for Thanksgiving. It's a good time to be around other people, a good time to have good food, and we would love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Van Buuren. Councilwoman Kincaid?
Yeah, thank you, Mister President. Again, I wanna thank you and my colleagues for recognizing me with this beautiful plaque. It wasn't something I was expecting, and I want you to know I deeply appreciate it. I just wanna say that during my thirty years, I've had the privilege, well, let me, let me rephrase that. I've had the honor of working with Ms. Brown, the city clerk. And I can't tell you how many times that we've been in communication with each other that we've been thinking about the same thing that needs to be addressed in our community and kinda where the council needs to be kinda going to accomplish what needs to be done. And we all have kind of our differences, but it's never about what really needs to be done. It's about what's the best way to get it done. And I think that's where we predominantly have our differences 'cause we all are here and we all love this community. I mean, you know, I don't have to be here. I'm here because I love this community. My parents live here. My kids live here. I've lived here all my life, and I don't plan on going anywhere. And, you know, I think back to nineteen seventy when I was in high school and General Motors went on strike. It was a national strike, and we struck for one thing, and that was thirty and out. And we accomplished that. And some of us have worked for General Motors for more than thirty years, including myself. And I plan on being on the council for more than thirty years, Mister President. I don't plan on going anywhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Kincaid.
Mister President.
Can I just finish, Mister Councilman Meads?
Beg your pardon?
I wanna get to Mister Bate before I get my remarks in.
Okay, but Mister President, my position is this. When I look at the agenda, it say public comment and then adjournment. But normally, those agendas should say council discussion. What I'm appealing to you is this. When we meet in a council meeting, and this was a fairly short meeting, I'm here to tell you that the Thanksgiving, I wish people a happy Thanksgiving as well, but that ain't what the end of the meeting is for as it relates to me. The end of the meeting could be any relevant business that comes up. And so I'm trying to not take offense to you, and I'm hoping to appeal to my colleagues to say to you that based upon any other business of the day, we need to take our job seriously, and it ain't just a five-minute window where you can't address the public unless you do it in that five minutes. You can't put no motions on the floor unless you do it in that five minutes. For thirty years, I've been coming to council meetings, and I've seen them from McCree to Duncan, to Taylor, whatever. And colleagues, I want you to know, there's certain council members who wouldn't put up with these. I'm gonna call them emergency manager rules and laws. Who created this five-minute rule and putting restraints from a chair? The council is the governor. If this council decides that it want the chair to continue from Kincaid to Freeman to now you telling us that we can talk for only five minutes and at the end of the meeting, we can't put motions on the floor and address the public unless we do it in these timeframes, then I'm gonna be the first one to team up with the community. If it cost me my seat, I'm not gonna stand for it. So I'm not gonna let another meeting go by with these type of rules. Don't, I'm gonna be the one implementing the recalls because that ain't what we put here for. We ain't put here to just wish people a Thanksgiving and not, and I do wish people a happy Thanksgiving. But at the end of the meeting, I'm not gonna use five minutes to address people who address the council and then say, I got one minute left to talk about snow, to talk about governance. That's just an unfair rule, and it's not in the written rules. Now, if y'all wanna put that in the written rules, the next rule making go around, I'll be the first to object to it. But I'm not gonna sit another meeting without leaving the meeting and taking action against all those that acquiesce and tell me, representing the ward, that I can't put stuff on the floor and speak about the important business of this city council. Let this be the last one, and I'm glad you letting me speak now because I'm sitting here sizzling.
Well, and let me say this, Councilman Meads. We won't get into debate, but I guarantee you, this will not be the last one, okay? This will, this won't be the last.
Won't be the last what?
No, no.
Won't be the last what?
You said this the last five-minute restriction. I can't promise you that.
Well, I can make a promise. I guarantee you this. If I appeal your ruling and the body set, you and Winfrey is protected because y'all got to go six months before you can be recalled. It's unorthodox for a sitting councilman to threaten people and tell them what they'll do politically. Politically, I am. I'm saying I will get with the people, and if it cost me my seat, that's how grounded I am in principle. Those who acquiesce and let that ruling come from the floor, I will help people target them. It's not gonna happen under my watch.
Thank you, sir. Mister Bate, can I have your?
I know what's happening. It ain't gonna happen. One minute after I done addressed people. That's crazy.
So I was asked about appointments to the KWA.
I know spoke.
First of all, the composition of the KWA board is governed by the KWA bylaws. And those bylaws provide for five incorporating board members and ten additional members. The mayor of the City of Flint is an incorporating board member. It runs with the position. So Dr. Karen Weaver is a member of the KWA board by virtue of the bylaws and by virtue of being the mayor of the City of Flint. There are three additional board appointments. The, and I'm not sure if this question was asked, but I believe it was asked, if the mayor necessarily serves as the chair of the KWA board. The mayor does not. The board votes in a chair. And when there is a vacancy in of an office holder, the board then can fill that vacancy and select a chairperson. And lastly, the question of amendment of the bylaws of the KWA was raised. In Article twenty-two of the bylaws, it provides a process. As Councilman Freeman said, it would require approval of the legislative bodies of all five incorporating members, which would be, this body would have to approve on behalf of the City of Flint of any amendment to the bylaws.
So she does have a, she does have a pick, so she can choose, correct?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yes, okay. She has.
And that, Mister President, so that's not interfered with by the city administrator?
Right.
That's correct.
Now, what about the opportunity to choose? When the former mayor chose, did it put a timeframe on the people they picked or the new mayor just can come on at any time and pick? Do you know?
Can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
The former mayor didn't pick those people?
They were appointed by Mike Brown in two thousand twelve or thirteen, maybe? And those appointments were by resolution of the emergency manager, and they serve until replaced.
And they serve until replaced? They don't have a, they can be replaced now if the mayor chose to?
That's correct. She has, the mayor currently has three appointments to the KWA board.
And they can be Flint residents?
That's right.
They don't necessarily have to be council members. Is that a fact?
That is a fact.
And then the last thing I'm asking you or Mister Freeman, so this communication's about chairing something. The mayor don't necessarily get a chairmanship of anything. That's gonna be at the annual, what is it, an annual organizational meeting?
There is an annual organizational meeting, but the bylaws also provide that if there's a vacancy in an office holder, that the board can then select for the unexpired term of the office holder. So the board could vote to, but I believe the annual meeting's in January, so I anticipate that that's when the board would do it. Councilman Freeman may know better than I do.
Yeah, no, we're, actually, they're doing it Wednesday. Yeah.
So they gonna have the organizational meeting Wednesday?
Which was supposed to have happened, I mean, I don't want anybody to think that just because Karen Weaver was elected mayor and, you know, that Dane isn't there anymore. No, this was, this was planned to happen in August or September, but there wasn't a quorum for that meeting, and that's why it's been pushed off till November now.
So that organizational meeting will happen at what place, what time?
Across the street at two o'clock.
So the meeting is at the county board of commissioners' chambers this Wednesday at two o'clock?
Uh, the incorporate, well, the incorporating board, there's two boards. The incorporating board, which serves as the nominating committee, meets at one thirty, and that's for the five incorporating members. Flint, City of LaPierre, LaPierre County, Sanlack County, Genesee County. The KWA board meeting, which is a separate board, meets at two o'clock.
And then the Hayman hearing is at one o'clock?
They'll determine that.
Now, Pete, my question to you, does the mayor, is the mayor aware of the meeting that will take place on Wednesday? Did we, anybody communicated with her?
I can't answer that question.
Well, Jody, between you and Pete, I think someone needs to send the mayor a memo or email or something that she will have communication. I don't want her not to know.
I'll speak with Maxine Murray to ensure that the mayor.
And Mister City Attorney, if I may, Mister President, have you sit down and went over those rules with her?
I don't discuss communications between attorney-client.
Let me, let me do this. Let me finish with my remarks, and then we gonna go.
Okay, Mister President. Well, I'm gonna make a referral that somebody send the mayor them communications 'cause that ain't no attorney-client privilege. That's the city business, and it's a request that not only do she get communications about the meeting, but she be given a copy of those bylaws to look over. And so that's what I'm getting at. This thing has got to be done and talked about in a certain way, and that's why I'm gonna stick with what I'm saying, Mister President. If we can't discuss business at the end of these meetings, you watch what I say. I'm gonna hate to do it.
Councilman Meads, I hear you. I agree with you. I asked the communications to get through to the mayor so she'll knows what they want.
Just be careful with what you agreeing with me on.
Thank you. Let me say this. I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. I wanna thank Mister Quincy Murphy for his dedication and his hard work that he does do in the community. I appreciate all that he does, and there's a lot of Quincys out there that really do the job, and Burston is, I mean, Dewey is his baby. The Pavilion, Mister Locken, I'll begin with you. I did have conversations with you this week about Ambassador's Trailer Park. So I keep you posted on it. I know that you have a lot on your plate, but you know how dear that is to me to get that accomplished. And so we will work on that along with Ms. Henderson. I've informed her to. The Mount Foundation, we thanking for their donation that they've given for the north end of town. I really appreciate that. And, yeah, Ruth Mount Foundation. And so I want to say this. I'm willing to work with anybody, but it doesn't, it makes, I must serve the third ward. And I just come through the election, and they spoke, and they spoke loud, even with the lies that were told and put out there on me. And so I'm not worried because if I take care of them, they gonna take care of me. And so therefore, I'm saying to you tonight, we gonna work together along with the new mayor to move this city forward. The people have spoken, and they spoke for Karen Weaver as mayor and me for the third ward. And I'm going to do what I need to do to move the third ward in this city on. Now, we ain't got to agree with everything, but the people sent me here to do something, and I'm gonna do it. And so therefore, everybody, tonight have a happy Thanksgiving. May you and your families enjoy one another. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mister President, Mister President.
There's a motion on the floor.
Mister President. Mister, who made the motion?
Ms. Galloway.
You recognized her?
I recognized her.
Okay, so I'm saying, Mister President, you refused to recognize me.
No, 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 no.
Well, I know what I was saying. If it's a motion on the floor to adjourn, and you recognized her, I'm telling you, I was saying, Mister President, before you even asked for a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion on the floor, there's support. There's a motion on the floor, there's support. Roll call, Ms. Medley.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
You can have three, six months.
Mr. Mays?
You calling my name?
Yes, I am.
I vote no.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no to adjourn.